I personally did.
And to follow the process.
Yes.
And even so, the reception and dust.
San Diego City Central School District, we now have the homeland of the Ananbuktown. The people of the gray bill, Senate of people who is ancestral and moderate their land. Salamita School District, now sand and water being enjoyed. We stand with all indigenous peoples and their resolve remain connected to their land. While we cannot undo what has been done, it is the goal of the Salamita City Central School District to recognize the history and make improvements that will benefit the next seven generations of indigenous. Thank you. Alright, so I'm watching what we're doing, we're gonna read teams. Uh, there is a couple, we added the technical private PowerPoint. Uh, the three A will be updated version of the text one instead of B. And we renewed Kathleen Mahini and Madison Delsey as these activations. Uh, these co-advisors and we made adjustments to the uh, several set of that and gave you the. Okay, uh, so in the motion, you're gonna. Nothing got ahead, you know, Brad, do you have any questions, concerns? On there, side of that, both. Right, well, here. So I had another three year presentation, first up presentation um, for our construction on the stores. Alright, at this point, I'll turn it over to Julian Schott from Perfect Construction Company.
Hey, everybody, got David too here, Assistant Superintendent with us out here on construction sites. So I'll give you an update on the active construction project.
Oh, I'm sorry, can you just sort of, why do we have this actually want to do this on the board? Three A. The adjustments.
Yeah.
Basically, I've been just like, put this on the spot, but I thought that was under tech point. I had other tech work, so.
Does anyone have a meeting?
No, there's no meetings. I, there's no whole one. I, okay, the tech, the wrong one.
Okay. Alright, my name is kind of, so talk a little bit about our active construction projects. This one here, Phase 3.3 Prospect, which is winding down. We've got substantial completion a couple of weeks ago here, wrapping up some renovations in the high school here in the hallway here. Then we'll talk about the high school active construction lot going on over across town. And then we'll get into Phase 4, which is in pre-construction with the track and field project. So before, on the first page, saw the rendering, I'm gonna turn it over to Dave for some of the active updates. Want to draw attention to that rendering, some of the photos that we had, and hopefully somebody I saw the, the outside of the building and we're walking by, but finally saw come, come the light out there and it looks pretty cool. So I'm gonna draw attention to that as well. Turn it over to Dave for the phase 3.2.
Everyone, I'm gonna first update everyone on the prospect, I don't know if it's just. For those of you that don't remember about the whole element, it feels like just one year ago, we started construction. And then Joel mentioned the rendering, they were pretty close, I would say. And as we're approaching completion day, we were able to stay ahead of schedule in the week before the original completion day, which is seven thirty one. And Joel mentioned there's some upgrades going on in our school. We're able to look at the inventory from that here and realize some official requirements to go ahead and upgrade, so we got corridor painting upgraded. And what you can see here is all the corridors will be painted white and then the low drains will be designed more just like you had around this area up here. And then you got six exterior floors for this playground way. And you got the A D A ramp that is in the middle way in the last seat. As you can see, all this is on wood there right now, all this furniture is still being brand new. They just got it sold last Friday. And that's the right knowledge you said, we're in the close out base, so we're collecting all the paperwork from the contractor and closing on any open access items. And that's really it for the elementary school.
Just one thing to add on all the painting and always and everything, okay, because we're working with the photographer to capture all the murals that are on all the walls there now. And try to do some, some rendering and some artwork after, it's all beaten, so that those items don't get lost in these, these hallways.
That's where the basic report, we need to draw this in the very street edition. This is the bus school facade upgrades, shadow box, the panels are going to be on site later this week, that explanation. And throughout the campus, you can see these panel, panel over base and here's four yards. And then this is your main entrance stand. That's first, the completed, we're starting to complete them also, we got structural steel in brand edition. And then you got the high school facade upgraded. And the Native American Suite, they just started the interior wall ratings. And then that's where the extra wall ratings at the addition just starting yesterday. And then Enriched Office, we received only, we have seen some painting for upgrades as well. That's where some of the upcoming scheduling milestones, they can see is the Native American Suite, I mean, E, that is scheduled for eight twenty one. And then when we start on grade at the school mission, it's scheduled for eight twenty five. The brick veneer for the musician is eight thirty. And then you got your bus school and operating, so these are bus and operations, those are going down nine one. That's for schedule for the Native American Suite and the addition, we're on schedule. The Native American Suite is two twenty nine and the church office is four five and close out is going to start on five, six minutes.
So for Phase 4, that's Phase 4 is a high school track and field project, which is currently in pre-construction. So. Early design milestones, we had the design period was from May to June of twenty twenty three. Sign team was working to get the drawings submitted to S and D. In June, they were able to do so by the end of June, where their S and D submission, so drawings are with S and D. That review period is expected to last into October. The key point there is the, the district's aid will renew after September eleventh of this year. So that approval needs to come after that date to make sure that the, the most aid is coming back, I should, for, for this project. Uh, that period will begin right after S and D approval in November, go into December twenty three. And then the schedule has some word in contracts by the end of December of twenty twenty three, which will be the kickoff to the construction period. So construction will last through twenty twenty four into August of twenty twenty five, where we'll be substantially completing fieldwork. And then we'll begin to close out in September twenty five, with close out wrapping up the end of that calendar year. So right now, the, the current schedule and plan is to go after the, the new track and field in the twenty twenty four calendar year. And then the following year, jump into getting rid of the old tennis courts and then start on softball and the new tennis courts that follow in spring and summer with that August of twenty twenty five. Any questions?
I don't, yeah, what's uh, what's the field going to be running for?
So predominantly soccer and lacrosse, there are, so over at Best Park, football is the dominant line on, on that field. Over on the track and field at the high school, it'll be predominantly like for soccer and lacrosse, but there will be lines for football, but more in the, more faded, not as recognizable. It's about to part in the event, the, and about wanting to be played on there for football as well. Any other questions?
Well, back in the saves, when uh, ours is going to be wrapped up before school?
Yeah, so the completion date in the best schedule for the contractors out here in the hallway. Um, this was base bid work to upgrade the finishes out here is eight twenty five. They're wrapping up some of the last pieces of the tile today, routing tomorrow, and the plan is to bring the painter and next week to do some painting and final cleaning. Hope that's be done by eight twenty five. There are some of the, the other items that Dave mentioned that were added school based on the additional funding that was left over for this phase. The work with the administration on, they get some more upgrades in the hallways. That work we're shooting to get done as far as schools concerned at September one, but it was added work and we're working with some of the, the artists and making sure we're holding off on the murals. Some of that might carry over in the second shift after, after school, but working on some of that, but that change order work might roll over into the school year of that, but that won't be impactful to the, the district or, or teaching area that, that means.
Uh, is there anything else that we need to check this over here? So, any issue come somewhere ago?
Yeah, so that, so you're talking back to Phase 2, the previous phase and those issues that were, so. Yeah, so that list went out and was resolved, and then we had some correspondence with that commissioning agent, speaking back and forth with Rich Minkowski, that all those items had, had been worked out and humidity issues have been resolved. You ready to start a tour on the agenda as well?
There is.
Uh, so let me, maybe pause for a little moment here and take it more detailed, let's see.
And you want to make a note that this is really one of our first projects um, with our architect and interfacing with Liam and Turner and heavy ban. Through several of the projects, this, I will say, you've already heard, we're ahead of schedule. We have contingency plans that we can expand on upgrades across the building. Everything went exceptionally smooth, especially compared with some of the projects we've had in the past. And it really goes to coordination between the Julie overseas and the Turner effects, so. You know, it's, it's part from my perspective, but having sort of world crew applications and problems that have been significantly reduced, much more enjoyable part. I just want to publicly say that this is a smart project.
We're talking in the long, long, yeah. We're staying on there. Move on to our next presentation, which is the.
Thank you, everybody. Alright, we will turn it over to Music Doctor.
So, um, I just wanted to give you a real quick overview of some of the activities that happened this summer. And what a nice segue to be able to see the new steam room, which hopefully next summer will house some of our summer camps. Uh, this year we were in the cafeteria, uh, when we were here at Prospect, but uh, he had a great summer, still going, we have camp this week, we have camps next week. Um, so to get started with steam camp, uh, we canvassed out to the entire staff to see who would like to run some summer camps this summer. We had five teachers, staff, uh, come forward that said they'd like to design some camps for our students. Uh, we had another seven people volunteer to be helpers, running the desk, just being assistants during the camp. Uh, we put together a schedule and it was approved by our admins. At that point, you guys, can you switch that for me? We did some forums, we did paper forums, we did electronic forum, we did robo calls forums. We put things on the school website, we put things on Facebook. We tried to get the message out this summer to as many families as possible, uh, that we were going to be running these free steam camps for our residents. If a resident, if a person was outside of our district, they could send their kids to our camp for fifty dollars for the week, which is quite a bargain at twenty five dollars a day. Um, so we promoted those camps much to be put in registration for due in early June. Uh, response was super, it was really good. We registered kids right into the end of July, believe it or not. Switch that for me. Uh, we had our camp start the week after school ended, so we took Monday off after school ended. Camp started on Tuesday with a Pokemon Go camp. We had over a hundred students register for sixteen camps. We did end up canceling about four camps due to low interest. Um, and I don't think it was that they weren't great camps, I think we just didn't hit the right audience. So next year we'll try to revamp how we, um, we hit those people. We didn't have several camps that brought, ran in successive weeks, like our camp, mini camp invention that we designed specifically to, um, have Prospect and Seneca kids stay after summer school. Uh, we did have a handful of kids that did that, as well as handful of kids that came in just for steam camps. Um, we had many, many students register for multiple camps, which was nice. And about half of our campers used summer school or bus transportation, which was really convenient. And this, just to make a shout out to Sue Wilson, who was super to work with this summer. Um, and made busing very easy for our students, our families. So we have, um, all of our camp descriptions and photos from our camps on our website. Anybody if you wouldn't mind opening that? We had tons of pictures, our teachers were super taking pictures, so as that holds up, I'll kind of tell you a little bit about each camp. So our first hand around was Pokemon Go, lasted three days. And our students went to St. Bonaventure and caught Pokemon. And if you know anything about Pokemon Go, it's not just an electronic game, but it also helps students to learn about landmarks. There's a little bit of history when you stop and catch a Pokemon at a certain spot. So A D Shaw and Jen Hawkins ran this camp for eight students. Um, and it was three days, not only did they catch Pokemon, but they cooked and they did some crafts, so that was a lot of fun. The following week before the July, we had a two day camp ran by Jen and Billy Brazil. And that were posters and posters, and our kids learned about Canva and Adobe Photoshop. And they learned our T-shirt maker and a toaster maker down in the high school maker space. Ten students took advantage of that camp. Uh, the kayaking experience was technically not a steam camp, but it was run under the guise of seeing an adventure. And you can see all the kayaking fun that our students had there with, um, Rich Wade. And Kirsten Furlong ran that, um, as a standalone camp, but we wanted to make sure that we gave that a shout out. Kids had a great time there. Wild and messy science, ten students, and they want to run this as an after-school E E P experience for our students because they love wild and messy science. So our students use shaving creams, uh, they did all kinds of science experiments, they went to the zoo. Um, they had a great time, they went to the aquariums. So they had a wonderful time, had lots of great experiences. Um, and Jen and A D Shaw ran that, and that was a super fun experience for us, and got into a lot of science experiments there. Garden club was ran, um, by Matt Buckholz. And he had the students working on the gardens, uh, at Seneca. And that was a great experience, they learned about plants, they learned about gardening techniques. They did a lot of community service on our gardens and screwed them up wonderfully. They did a lot of community service on our gardens and spruced them up wonderfully. And then let's see, we have seven that we. 3D printing, look, we got Dungeons and Dragons. Dungeons and Dragons, seventeen students are playing Dungeons and Dragons from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM every Friday for eight weeks. They have learned the game, they've learned teamwork. Ms. McGarrett came over one day with a credit card so that they could take some files from a website that they created their own little dragon dungeons figures. They downloaded them and then they used a resin printer to print those off. So that camp not only was teaching the students about teamwork, about playing Dungeons and Dragons, but they also used our 3D printers, our resin printer. And that was run by Tim Schopper, Jacey McCully, and Marie Lee Davis. And they were wonderful with their pets. So that's still going on. 3D printing, this was also run by Tim Schopper and Jen Hawkins. And our students learned about our Dremel 3D printers, not only how to create something and print it, but how to maintain those printers, which is super important. And you can see they also did some wood burning on the laser engraver. They had a great time. This was a really fun camp. And that had six students in it. Copper even came after he broke his finger. Camp had a great time. You can see here, they're working on tinker cans. So they're learning about designing in a 3D space, taking that design and then putting it onto the printer to make their creations. And let's see, art exploration camp, five students took advantage of this. They did a lot of things with A.D. Shaw and Andy Kohler, they made sugar stones. They did all kinds of art projects. You'll see they were working on tie-dye and T-shirts. Tons of fun. They had a guest artist from Salamaca come in and seek. I'm sorry, I don't remember her name, but according to the description. Casey Colburn was the Salamaca resident that came in and spoke to our students there. So like I said, that was five students took advantage of that. We did run a second version of Garden Club and another four students took care of that with the pictures all together. So here's our Prospect mini camp. These guys met for four weeks. Kids could come one week or all four weeks. They made these really handy bots here, learned about a little bit about robotics. They learned about physics and a skateboard park creation. They did all kinds of other little crafts there. They also had a celebrate inventions week where they just talked about different inventions. And near my Dela Cruz, Amanda Gunn and Billy Brazil helped with those camps. Lots of fun, fun stuff they did. Seneca mini camp, let's see, we had total, like first week in Prospect, nine students, ten students the second week, four the third week, and I think it was fair week before the fourth week. Seneca mini camp, they did a lot of the same projects. This one was a venture, learn about how to run a business, which we thought was a little more appropriate for Seneca. And we had five students the first week, four the second week, two the third week, which was fair week, and four the fourth week on that one. Drones and robotics was also run by Tim Schopper and Jen Hawkins. Our students learned how to fly the UAZ drones. They did some robotics work. That was a lot of fun. We had 10 students participate in that. It's like a little robot there that they're running. So they had a lot of fun with that one. Pikes Trains and Space Exploration, they took a visit to our own Salamaca train station, had a wonderful presentation by the World Work Fair about the history of the train station. They also went to the Museum of Science and learned about some space. Graham Hayes brought in some of his knowledge and helped with that camp along with AB and Jen. We just had a college camp, which was four students. They went fishing in Allegheny. They actually spent three days at Allegheny. Imagine our kiddos going to Allegheny outside for three days. Street walking, hiking, fishing. It was a wonderful experience. Tim Schopper and Max and Graham Hayes did that camp. The fourth day they went to the zoo and the highlight of that was they got to watch the new lion pups get vaccinated by the zookeepers. So that was a lot of fun. Camp Invention is running this week. If you don't know about Camp Invention, we've run this before. It's actually run by the National Inventors Hall of Fame. We buy kits, everything that is needed, all the curriculum, all the supplies are sent to us. We actually took about 35 kits this year. We split them up between the mini day camps and then the full day camp. And we have 10 kids involved in the full day camp this week. There's no pictures on the last two yet, but esports camp is next week. Seventeen students have signed up with Mr. Schopper to learn about esports and then hopefully continue on on our esports team, which Mr. Schopper does run. And also geocaching is going to happen next week, where they're going to go out and learn about geocaching, get out in nature. And A.D. and Jen Hawkins are running that. And also wanted to mention Dungeons and Dragons also is an after-school program. Thank you to Mr. Seber, that our students are able to participate from 3:00 to 6:00 PM every Friday. So hopefully those 17 kids will join us, and that's the plan. So you'll see some of our highlights there, Buffalo Zoo, the new network, Albert Knack Art Gallery, Buffalo Museum of Science, Allegheny State Park, Griffiths Belcher Park, St. Bonaventure, the Ram Museum, Dubots, which are little data collecting devices. Mr. Graham Hayes came in and showed us how to our gas artists. And Brady and Swenson actually donated ice cream one week to our campers, and they were able to go over to Tony's and enjoy that. And those are just some of the highlights. It has been a wonderful summer for the kids who participated. We hope that maybe next year we can get more kids to participate. And we did want to thank the administration, the board, all the teachers that helped and supported for allowing the kids to have this experience this summer. It was really a great time. And if you ever get to talk to any of the students that came to camp, they loved it and it was really a good experience for them to view school in a different light. Any questions? Well, thank you again for letting me come today. Thank you again for supporting our STEAM program. We do appreciate it.
If I could for just a second, many times we wondered what makes Sal make a difference from other districts. Like what are things that we do that other places don't? And that's a perfect example, keeping students engaged over the summer. And none of that would have been possible without all the staff that took time to organize that. And particularly, Scott, who took on the roles here, organizing the whole camp, organizing everything. Without her dedication and work, this wouldn't have happened. It would nowhere near be acceptable. So another special thing.
Yeah, today, I just wanted to say thank you for showing me this place. Because I couldn't speak on the app, and our S Y D advisor that I've already snapped into these little rooms. And I think who would love these rooms, or at least one of them, or some of them in this area, whatever. I love the one with the plants in there. I think this could be a home grass, I think, maybe this year to start off. And just, you know, a lot of the data shows that little guys are the ones that are kind of showing up right now. So to drag, the older kids might be a little harder coming up September. It might be nice to start with the release of that school hours. It should be starting, starting to be, you know, a little bit like this, if people can really draw a lot of parents and families in. Be really comfortable for them. So we're gonna have all here to start off with. That's really it. And I just wanted to really say for that. And that's the big thing for us to try to do.
You don't really have any board communication. They're sharing, if they'd like to save the money. We're gonna move on to the consent again. We use motion to approve the consent thing. Motion. What do you think, Chris? Second amendment. Are there any questions on the details? On favor, on higher, both, same, which is here. I mean, six under our overall, we have our policy 5411, it's 520. So we need a motion to approve of the tax. Motion. What do you think?
Second.
Second amendment. Are there any questions on any of the, there are any about taxes?
Yeah, exactly. So on the extra classroom activity, you know what the state said. They're losing for a year, but it's a, it's a new call. But is, can they, they were extra funds open? Yeah, they can hesitate themselves instead of just calling back and doing a new issue or something. Very well, we, we had a sort of money, our, I don't know, that should, all of my raising, all of the city more, you know, class had to go down there and say, we must go to St. Mark's. So that I think was a nice change to. That's exactly why I asked. The policy just, it doesn't need proof of that. That's the reason why I don't.
Yeah, they can before they.
So we, exactly, we're going to change the policy.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, this is fun. This is, yeah.
I can bring it back.
Yeah, it's the paragraph funds, you just continue the extra classroom activities. Those enacted for one year and regularly pressed shall revert to the account of the general student organization, the student policy, and shall be extended according to the organization's constitution. It hasn't been moved in there. Need to have investigation.
Well, that's a paragraph for connot already. So like, say, we buy senior class, but they, what do you think before they've all graduated? It's just hanging out there. Then we would say where it goes. But if they were before they leave, at their last meeting of the public year, they can say, all right, we've got X number of dollars. It goes to where.
All of that. I mean, this sounds really good about, hey, class needs to go down. So we always make sure the model has to the eyes, you know, what, you know, what do you guys want to do with money? Do you want to donate it and get a pension there? And one year they did a tree on back, or just different things. For the most part, I mean, we still really good about, hey, your class has gone on this, has began this. It's, it's been done like that. It's just so weird. Yeah, well, I was trying to just working their day and day. Prior to class needing reading of that, because they don't have the black and white, these words hit when we start pulling on tape or rather see something different. Well, I was just wondering, they're saying that prior to the class needing, we're doing that because they don't have a black in white, these words hit when we set the wheel on date, or we're going to see something different.
So then, the gentleman, the senior, the senior motion, will, for, will make a motion to approve the policy 5411. And then table policy 55. We revise the motion for 55. As long as Chris and Chad just tell us that we can figure out a better way, we don't have, we don't have to reset, we don't have to reset it, we just take it and revise it. Sure. It was, I will live with that. So we're going on 354 allows, moving to table 55, so we got a motion by Thursday, thinking about that, off paper. I, opposed, same, which is good. And under, they have a new business, they have our change of orders, you know, law, suspension. So we're getting the threat, I mean, talking, and then we have a couple of increases for that, for that here. So, so the motion to approve the change of orders, one suspension, motion. Very, second I read, are there any questions? On favor, opposed, so same, motion good. And B, the seventh one, between 3.4, between the different rights and colors, so we will know what we can do to get that.
Motion.
Second I get, are there any questions? On favor.
I am.
Opposed, same, which is good. We have a party, and we see, we are creating positions, we have a salary position, we have a decision of salary. So we have a really focused set program by there for us getting achieving records, working, working in the board. And then putting in a jury, putting in your salary. So the motion to approve the creation of the positions and off of the. Motion, motion of cases. Second I question, are there any questions? On favor, opposed, same, what do we get? And A, it's a personnel design. So we have fish, a little A, tree B. In the motion for personal, to pay the water. Thank you, what do I get?
Second.
Second right there, on favor, opposed, same, which is good. And H, that are personal actions of seven. So, I, we need a motion to approve, approve each. Okay, what do you like for that? Second, second right there, are there any questions? On favor.
I am.
Opposed, I will say, which is good. And, so then, here you go.
I, actually, that's our way on stream, okay, I can see her, you have anybody for actual?
I can speak on most of that. Elizabeth in St. Bonaventure, we're really excited to have her at St. Bonaventure Special Education picture. She has worked in a variety of practices at St. Bonaventure, most recently as a preferred building day substitute. And then build a variety of long-term substitutions at St. Bonaventure this year, excellent job. She'll be perfect in the special education role because she's super flexible, she, you know, willing to differentiate and get down and dirty with the kids when she needs to. But most importantly, she really wants to be at St. Bonaventure as she has a passion and passion for students, so we're really good at covering.
We will welcome the others as soon as they are available.
We have our board of directors. So we have our policy meetings, which we can bring back to 55, 20, our capital project summary, our business education meeting minutes, our upcoming events. We have personnel instruction to, to perfect. And our next board of education meeting will be August 22nd. We also have Prospect Fitness, as we've been up already, on August 29th, on 5:35, this is 30.
Do you want to answer?
Yes.
Yeah, I was all prepared for live comments tonight. So Prospect, from the grill, there's going to be loving time roasted chicken and hot dogs on the front. Besides, we're going to be summer vegetable pasta salad, cherry tomato, and one salad, classic, and obviously, we have desserts, we can put these brownies and strawberry shrimp. Wow, ice wall, we did the cheese, we tangoed our chicken, served on a bread, with cheeseburgers, we wanted. The sides are fish salad, cherry tomato, corn salad, and classic, and also dessert, statement, groupie fries, and strawberry. I'll serve by our substitutions, that are awesome, I love that.
Well, hopefully we're getting any questions? Yeah. We're waiting for it. Next, we have our second session, so we need a meeting to review that discussion for the first of the 55, we're done. So, second right there, second right there, on favor, I oppose, same, motion very, thank you everybody for coming. You all.